All right, I will call to order the village council regular meeting Tuesday, March 12th at 7:00 PM. Could we please stand for the legislative.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mayor, would you call the roll, please?
Laura Borjo, I'm here. Kelsey Cook.
Here.
Maureen Helberg.
I have been here.
Allison Calm, here. Jacob Nikosia.
Here.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda, support.
A motion made by Nikosia, seconded by Helmut. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, in the may. Motion carries. Next is call for the public. This is the time for the public to address council. Anyone who wishes to address council, please step up to the podium. Seeing no one moving, I will move on to item six, presentations. The presentation for Officer Gary Rouse.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Fine audience, officers. I am proud to announce the promotion of a new sergeant today, our new night sergeant, Gary Rouse. And I'm also proud to say the future for the Oxford Police Department looks bright. We have officers that are dedicated to this community and their careers. Oxford is their home base and a place that they want to plant their roots. I'm proud of every one of these officers for their sacrifices to make Oxford a safe and inviting community. Officer Gary Rouse is one of these officers. He has been with the Oxford Police Department now for over seven years and has proven himself to be a leader. Fellow officers feel comfortable approaching him when they need his help, if even if they just had a question. Officer Rouse has shown that he can adjust his schedule to accommodate the needs of the department and fellow officers. As chief, I have called upon Officer Rouse for many needs and he has never turned me down. Officer Rouse has earned several awards as well as Officer of the Year. Tonight, I'm proud to announce our newest night shift sergeant, Gary Rouse.
You standing at something?
No. I'd like to thank everyone for this opportunity and I'm very grateful for it. I'm excited to start this new chapter. Like Chief said, I've been here about seven years now and I really enjoy working for this department. And every one of our officers, we really enjoy working for the department and we're grateful for your guys' support.
Thank you.
Good job. Thanks for your work.
Did I just hear a call from him?
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. See you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is item seven, a consent agenda. Is there a motion to receive and file item seven A?
I'll make a motion to approve, consent, receipt and file consent into the item seven A. Including the bills in the amount of $312,609.15.
Support. Motion made by Helmut, seconded by Borjo. Roll call vote, please.
Borjo, yes. Helmut.
Yes.
Nikosia.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes. Motion carries. Okay, on to item eight, unfinished business. We have A, the UTE budget update and third is the East Berth.
Okay, council, Mr. Weckel is out of town and I told him, don't worry about it. There wasn't a whole lot to talk about other than the street, the parking lot, streetlights. And I sent a memo out regarding that report. Basically, we're working with DTE, it's working out well. They came to the site, everything is for the condo they're expiring. They are going to take the streetlight or the vent poles that he has and they're going to do the installation, wear and installation themselves. It was about $7,000 amount of work. It's coming up later on, we've talked about it, but we're going to incorporate those lights into our community lighting program, like the other streetlights won't be a need for a stand, for a meter stand, a meter socket, stuff like that, so eliminate that unsightly item over there. And it'll be a flat rate like the other lights. Mr. Weckel is going to pay the fee that is required for DTE to do the work. He was going to pay to have them approve to do the work anyways. So once we get the agreement approved later on and we get Mr. Weckel to line it up.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions or comments from council?
Mr. Weckel has the poles?
Yes, he already has them in stock. It is building on Broadway.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
I'm hearing nothing further. On to item eight B, the Jordan Way Street Deception.
Right, and if you recall, we brought this to council a while back about accepting this. And I reached out to them before the holidays, the day we filed the survey work, legal descriptions, lot land, things like that. And they did. And as I went further down, I realized that the parcel that the new condo section is around is still in the developer's name. Casa, about Casa Development. And so, one of two things would have to happen. They could either go through the process and maybe manage to be doing that property transfer to get it into the association's name or the owners could do the agreement easement agreement with us. So if Mr. Davis is in the process of putting together an easement agreement, I was discussing it with the owners today and they're like, right now for them, they're just happy to sign easement. So once we get the agreement in place, we'll forward it to them. The easement will be in place, we'll send it to MDA and then we'll I told them, we're fighting the timeline because we have to approve on that here. Technically not until July 1st, it goes without saying, but we'd like to get it to MDA sooner than that.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions or comments from council on this item?
I'm sorry?
Okay. Item eight C, the Lutheran Church and Milling Lots split.
All right, so remember we talked about this as well with the church and we're trying to work out a global solution, right? So the two lots that come out eastward and front Pearl Street Church bones, their ideal situation is to put all of their lots into one parcel. They're going to end up with two parcels, or perhaps three. Those two lots that are on Pearl Street, their west line, which is toward the back of the parking lot, could then go out to Pearl Street, is where the boundary line is for the DDA. The DDA boundary can't spread over the middle of a lot, of a parcel. So those parcels around Pearl Street will have to remain separate. Whether they combine them into one or leave them as the two that they already are, doesn't matter, it's a full church. Then everything from that back lot line there from the church all the way out will be turned into one. So, and then, you know, whether the SNL goes down and there's half a cul-de-sac down there, that's basically going to be then the new northern line and that'll be the village property from then all the way to Enseton. Only thing that'll come to us and I'll wait for Mr. Kennedy to give the price out, he has to go out and physically do the survey to create that new legal and everything from that line, like the church property to SNL. They've done all the other work, they paid all the other survey work and things like that. Their part would only have to pay the survey work for our portion coming north. And then, once he gets that to us, you know, if it's, you know, if it leaves, it'll be small now, then we can get that and get those parcels processed. And it will finally be done. And one thing that did come related, talking to the county mapping, the ones that we thought were little slivers along the west, the northern edge and in front of the church and then one back, those are actually like recorded easements. They aren't actually parcels, that's what the county is telling me. So that's easy. We have to find those easements and then kind of vacate them, I guess, I'll need to do those. I want you to look at it, it's broken. Backing on that, we vacate those easements.
Great, thank you. Any comments, questions?
Sorry, this is Jerry Luder?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
There's nothing further on that item. We'll move on to new business then. So nine A is the second reading to adopt the TIP plan renewal. Is there a motion to approve the second reading?
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading of order number 422 to that DTE to renew.
Support. Motion made by Helmut.
This is for the TIP plan and the development plan?
That's what I was working on.
Was that a clarification that may have been made?
I think so.
Okay, so for the TIP plan and the development plan? Was that reflected in the motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Sure.
Okay.
That's how it's spelled out.
That's what I supported. Keep up, Kelsey.
Okay, any discussion on the motion? Any question? Okay. Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Kemp.
Yes.
Borjo.
Yes.
Nikosia.
Yes.
Helmut.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes. Motion carries. Second reading is approved. Thank you. Nine B is our budget workshop dates.
Yeah, so obviously we will be, I'm trying to adapt in budget in May, that or maybe. So we have the rest of the month in April to get together a few times. I would think maybe the first week in April or the second week, of course, is our council meeting and then perhaps maybe even the third week of April gives us a couple to do that. I am out of state the 10th to the 16th, in the middle of the month there. But like maybe the third or fourth we could get together, or the 17th, 18th. I'm not sure what works for everybody else, 24th, 25th.
Easter is in March, is it March 31st?
March 31st.
March 31st.
Last day of this month. So I would think if we meet a couple times, like we have in the past, that should be enough.
At least scheduled to.
Yeah.
So the, I'll start. I can't do Wednesdays and then the fourth is the state of the county, so I can't do the fourth either.
State of the county.
Maybe April 1st.
April 1st day, work for anyone.
Starting my life. Is anybody going away, please?
Easter is the morning, is the Sunday, 31st.
This'll be the day after Easter.
It'll be the day after Easter.
And I won't say it.
Laura, you're not going to spring break, are you?
Uh, not that.
She'll be back.
April 1 is an option.
So that might work, huh?
April 1 might work. April 1 would work.
What time?
Oh, no.
What time are we meeting?
Yeah, what time are you thinking? I think six was tougher, you get the council. Wasn't it later better?
Yeah.
Six thirty or?
Thirty would be Monday. Six thirty, was six thirty okay?
Community room?
Seven works better for everybody too, and that's.
Six thirty is doable on Mondays for me, if it's like six thirty is good. So Monday, April 1, six thirty. Now, what was the other date they were thinking? The 22nd?
Twenty second.
Twenty second, that's, yeah, the fourth Monday, so it's not the April 22nd. Twenty second?
It's a Wednesday, isn't it?
No, April 22nd.
Oh, I actually have a thing that night, the 22nd.
Twenty ninth or twenty fifth?
I'm still trying to enter the first on my calendar.
I'll be in Tennessee. And that's DDA night too. DDA news here.
You could really go rogue.
Yeah.
Two weeks, one night, man.
We're both Tuesday.
Tuesday the 3rd.
Yeah, 29th or 30th?
We're still in April.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Yes.
Yeah.
The first and the last day of the month.
There you go.
Either one of those. Any preference?
April 30th okay for me.
What's that?
The first and the 30th, there you go.
Six thirty as well?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't want to come the night then.
All right.
I don't want to come on the night.
Well, it comes when we meet. All right, so that though, and I think that should be enough. And then, of course, we'll have, you know, discussion or April, we perhaps a little bit.
Wait, what time was it?
Six thirty.
Six thirty.
One, four thirty, six thirty. All right, nine C.
I'm sorry, can we do seven on that one?
On the 30th?
Yes, please.
I think that's fine.
Thank you.
Guys can also have a regular meeting to a budget update.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just say we could have, for the evening, we get her, we meet on the first.
Yeah, that sounds great. Okay, thank you. Item C, the Village Office Parking Lot Beds, consideration.
Okay, so we have a recommendation letter from Row Professional Services in there about the beds. The bed tab is included in there. You see, they range from 464 to 599. So those bed ranges, most of them have kind of been in the middle pretty close. But they had a little outlay in the front and back. So due diligence was done by Row, reaching out to them and other communities and stuff that they've done work with. And we are very comfortable with recommending them, hutch paving, we granted the award for 464, 55340 is shown in this letter.
Okay, what would preference kind of apply at this point?
Nope, see, now if you look in the bed tab, no, the next one up is, the closest one is
Just because of the difference?
Yeah, because they only get 3% unless they're built, then it was 5%.
Right.
And the next one is way a bit.
Yeah.
Way a bit more.
No, nobody.
Yeah, there's nobody.
So I guess, I do have a question. Are there any concerns about, I guess, disparity in prices?
No, and, you know, and as soon as they walked out, that's the first thing we did, we started flipping it open and saying, what's their asphalt price? Asphalt price is pretty high, seller price is pretty high. I think one of the areas that they were lower than most was some of the underground installation of the platework and they have a contractor that they work with regularly, they have a good relationship with, so I guess they must have some table pricing. Because the unit pricing and everything else was pretty lined up.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation to the Row Engineering toward the bed for the Villa Towne Parking Lot to hutch paving.
Support. Motion made by Helmut, seconded by Kemp. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Kemp.
Yes.
Borjo.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
Nikosia.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes. Motion carries. Next, nine D, Village Office Parking Lot Construction Inspection Contract.
So again, that's in your fact that their Row Engineering, construction staking and observation and density testing and things, plus the annual type inspections, what they refer to as observation, for a total of $3,900 is the estimated cost. Again, rolling this into one phase helped tremendously. This was, by three phases, we were looking at around 90, four more. So I think there's some definite advantages of, and we're seeing them by taking this into one phase. Be a little more difficult to operate around here for that, five seconds, but well worth it, I think.
If there's no questions, I'll make a motion to approve the bed of Row Engineering for $3,900, $15,000 for the Villa Towne Parking Lot, the rotation, construction, engineering services. But on the polish.
Support. Motion made by Helmut, seconded by Borjo. Any discussion, question, comments? Seeing none. Roll call vote.
Kemp.
Yes.
Nikosia.
Yes.
Helmut.
Yes.
Borjo.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Nine E, the Annual Tax Element Agreement Renewal, proposed resolution 24-02. And I'll move to recommend renewal of the proposed agreement through, per vol. 24-02. Motion made by Cook, seconded by Helmut. Any discussion on the title, motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Nikosia.
Yes.
Helmut.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
Borjo.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes. Motion carries. Next is the West Nile Virus Fund Program, proposed resolution 24-03.
If there's no questions, I'll make a motion to approve resolution 24-03 for West Nile Virus Program.
Support. Motion made by Helmut, seconded by Borjo. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Borjo.
Yes.
Nikosia.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
Helmut.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes. Resolution is not there. Nine G, the DTE Master Streetlight Agreement, Westford Street in Brickwood's Court.
Yeah, and this is one that I've been looking for a few years. Finally got the right person, the community lighting. And I'm told, and I go back to some of the areas, there was a light at the intersection at one time. And so now we're looking to put one back there. And right behind the last part, Exhibit A of the master view, they talked about the revenue credit and how they worked that. So this will be zero cost because the revenue credit that's granted to MPSC is greater than the cost. So it won't be inclined to those at all.
Excellent.
Except for monthly, yearly, annual lighting bill, yes.
Very good. Thank you.
Do I just need permission to sign the agreement?
I'll move to allow the village manager to sign the master agreement for municipal street lighting as presented between DTE and the Village of Oxford.
Support.
Motion made by Cook, seconded by Nikosia. Roll call vote.
Kemp.
Yes.
Borjo.
Yes.
Helmut.
Yes.
Nikosia.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes. Next is DTE Master Lighting Agreement, the PUD Parking Lot Lights.
Yep, basically the same thing. This one, it has some cost because of the amount of lights and the amount of labor to install them. You see, the estimated cost is just about $7,600. But again, the Michigan Public Service Christian allows DTE office's credit and it's a little over $5,000, so the net cost is around about $2,500. And one of the things I wanted to ensure that was into the agreement is they were stating to me, oh, and then when, if this, somebody hits with a truck or fails, five years down the road, initially they were talking that, because these were special order lights and they don't have them, that we would have to buy one, have it on stock and all this stuff. Now, the position is, if you're finding that they said, "Bills, we will just install a stock DTE light that are winning emptyies and at no cost to us." Which would include concrete footings and everything, because they want higher footings on them than what are currently there. So I made sure that at no cost to the village was added into the agreement. We just, again, they're melding, they start other community lighting and Mr. Weckel will pay for this cost and then we get it to them hopefully get those lights up and running.
Okay.
So no meter with these ones as well?
This is, yeah, this is what I talked, worried about the PUD one, right? So initially in the plan, we're looking at the meter location socket, like you see around the DTE or chargers. But by going this route and tying it in, we wouldn't have to have that.
So what are you going to do on this one, since you just had?
Permission to sign the agreement, just like the previous.
No, I'll make a motion that we give the manager permission to sign the agreement with DTE Master Lighting Agreement for the Parking Lot.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Borjo, seconded by Helmut. Recognizing that Mr. Weckel will do that installation cost and you agree, that's excellent. We'll do a roll call vote, please.
Cook.
Yes.
Borjo.
Yes.
Helmut.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
Nikosia.
Yes.
Because I, when I saw the number, I just ordered up that way, I sent it today, so this one for then. I'm sure your cost is better and more, right?
Yeah. He's doing all right, yeah.
Good. Yeah, exactly.
He felt good too.
I'm telling you, no items removed from the content agenda, so we'll move to our second opportunity for public comment. If anyone would like to address council, please make your way to the podium. Seeing no public comments, we'll move on to our committee reports. Who's known of?
Yeah, not a lot of updates. Getting some more vehicles, working on the satellite app for, I think it's on Independence, for the additional areas that they're going to be covering. And that's pretty much it. I have Joe hopefully going, I'll be in Bermuda, so Joe's going to go to my next meeting next week.
I gotta leave Bermuda and come back to it though.
Yeah.
We thought it would be interesting if I zeroed and we all can watch me disappear.
Yeah.
Live from the train.
Yep.
Live from the train.
Thank you. Planning Commission and Cable Commission?
The Planning Commission has not been, haven't we?
Not lately.
And the Cable Commission has not been. It's been a very hard winter for me.
DDA, I would like to apply our executive director.
We always have something to say.
Thank you.
Well, just, I want to thank you guys for approving the TIP plan and Joe for all your help with it. I know it was a lot in Terry and that guy, I know, sitting next to you, he's pointing at you. Thank you, Bob. I appreciate it. So we have been very busy getting ready for all of our community events. First one kicking off this weekend, our downtown bar crawl. I just checked back there before I got up here, we have eight tickets left. But that'll be sold out by the 250. So really great event. We're using the funds to fund our trolley so that we can run an additional days for the community and keep it free to the public. So we're looking forward to that. We will have all of our community spaces set up. The lock program from the high school is actually coming in tomorrow to help us. Well, the weather is nice and we're going to get all of the community spaces ready. So the courtyard, patio and Washington Square. We have downtown passports currently going on, so any passports, anytime somebody shops, keep their receipts and they can turn them in for a downtown Oxford and Licorian gift card. So that's running through March. We have, all of our concerts are set for this summer, so we're looking forward to releasing that schedule. I think it's our best one yet and hopefully you guys think so too, but we have some really good acts that are touring that are coming in. We're able to really do well with sponsorships and the businesses really came together to help us kind of go bigger this year. So we're looking forward to concerts in the park. We also launched the cornhole leak, so starting tomorrow, couples will be able to sign up. And the cornhole leaks will be on Tuesdays, so Tuesdays and we have the businesses running it. And so we are getting the cornhole boards made and they'll have everybody's logos on them in town. Let's see, anything else good here? Our projects, Joe and I met with the contractors today behind Victoria's for the courtyard project. There's a couple tweaks that need to be made back there, so we're hoping in the next couple of weeks to have that area open to the public and really look finished. So, thank God for you, Joe, let me tell you. I appreciate it. And then the last thing is, is we were trained today by ON TV and in correlation with OCTV and their team on the podcast equipment at ON TV. So Kimberly and I will be launching the Downtown Diaries, which will be everything Oxford. And we'll be able to continuously interview business owners on a weekly basis and just kind of give them the inside scoop. We have a lot going on and a lot of businesses that are doing really well and they're expanding and really great things are happening. So we just want to be able to showcase that and get that out to the community. Besides for that?
That's it.
Besides for that word. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Palladium Trail?
Yeah, we met out in Edison Township a few weeks ago. The folks from Oxford Township Planning were talking about the master plan there. They were there getting some feedback and stuff like that. Other folks were there inquiring about what maybe fundraisers and potential, they could do, some runners that use the trail, a lot of the lights here in Westbury. And of course, it's a big lift, it's a lot of work, it has to do with the road commission and things like that. But we have some people who want to help if they can. And so there's been inquiries of both commissions, they have options on lights versus, you know, perhaps there's one that was slightly less, but none of them are cheap. So it was good. This is a running group that was there. And the Palladium Trail is launched first of month in March. We have another bottle bag going out back that Palladium Trail and if you use assistance will split proceeds on it. So we've already emptied our bag out of our back room for them. Takes us about a year to get one.
Yeah.
We have a pot drinkers around here. But that was about it.
Thank you. Manager, do you have an attorney report?
Okay, and then, like I said, I have a lot of things to jot down today, so I wrote them down just in case. But, and one other thing that came up today in the public tele, it prompted me, Oakland Press had a article out about medical, or not medical, it mentioned a lot of revenues around state, around areas. I had emailed a lady a week or two ago, but she was out and another lady was taking over. Well, Kerry Siles, OCTV, came, pointed me out yesterday and maybe get on camera.
I had emailed a lady a week or two ago, but she was out and another lady was taking over, well, Kerry Stile, the O T P D came, wondered if they were out yesterday and maybe get on camera and talk about it. So, um, she sent me a little blip on it today, probably because Jack was out of town. And, uh...
I saw it before I left.
Yeah, so I saw it this afternoon. I, I didn't trip up myself, so I'm just, I'm happy with it. Uh, but the rest, the stuff down here, parking lot project, I had a little more detail here, letters we've sent out. And some people mistaken, they thought we were paving the north or the southwest lot, right? Um, but we're not. Uh, but we sent it to all the businesses over there to encourage them, for those who have employees that park in Hudson area over here. Do like we're gonna do, park over in this northwest lot, it'd be a lot less pressure on that lot for parking. It's still pretty full during the day, but I think there's ample space for us to get up there. Uh, the traffic stations, again, D T E was here with the crews and of course, left hand didn't know what the right hand was doing, so they didn't get what in last week. Staffing, um, Tom McNeese, who's been with us quite a long time, and he's going this year. We're not exactly sure when this year. But Tom does almost all of our meter installations and calibrations and meter readings and things like that. So even as the, uh, summertime comes around, we would probably look for some kind of part-time summer help. But I think what we're gonna try to do now is reach out and post for a full-time job if we can find one. We were really lucky a year and a half ago, we found Brett Poltes, young man doing great. So maybe I see somebody in here have some overlap, trip or time. It might even be July or somebody's looking to leave. We haven't given anything specific data, it's a couple of months around. So we're gonna post and we don't want to wait till middle summer, try looking for somebody. We'd like to contest some of them, maybe just looking now. And then there's some T P W, uh, Park Street Water Main. Rudy and Don came back to us, you know, in the fall or, I'm sorry, around holidays, like, you know, we should at least check on our sewer lines. And we had all videoed, all cameras, and Dependable has a crawler, they actually dug up the leads toward the houses. And it was pretty astonishing, some of the areas that we didn't get calls in the sewer with the infiltration of the roots at the seams. And so the majority of the homes on Park Street are gonna have to have excavation down and, and where they cast iron out of the house and the clay weeds, there's gonna have to be some sections replaced. Why don't we, now, we'll...
Sewer pipe?
Yeah, just small sections, yes.
The weed, that is private property?
Well, right where it meets ours.
Right, okay, so it's at the connection?
It's a connection, it's a connection.
Okay.
And it should be the right way. It'll be on the way.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah.
It's coming in, I mean...
It's kind of where they, the, because the two pipes come together and there's a seam there and they're just different materials and so there's a lot of...
We can tell that it's ours, not our...
Yeah, they have measurements and stuff, so that's where...
Those, right, I mean, so...
See, it's hard to tell right with that. You don't have the, the valve there, right, like the water, but...
I'm just thinking like, so for my property, we can ignore this tree right away. And I have to get it snagged twice a year. My face will back up.
So we're looking at these and some of them are worse than others.
It's good that it's getting done. I'm surprised that's a village cost.
What is it, what is yours clock like?
True.
Some of it is actually right when you get, yeah, some of it, right, the roots are all the way down, right, but they're coming into the main.
Yeah.
Now, it's, it's the hair roots, right? They're, they're fine, but...
Yeah.
We're like, well, we don't want to have this, all this worked on, a new street. And then when they're a year or eight months, you have to tear one off to replace it because it's right in the road edge. So we're gonna get some ideas to replace some of those connections. It won't relate to, if it's a sewer fund cost, so, you know, the fund for the water main is for the, the water fund, the street fund, and then some general fund money going into that. So that part won't be affected. And your work would be sewer related, directly funded by the sewer fund. So, um, T P W Sunset had done most of our water service league works was out, uh, just today. And then we're looking at a couple of little votes, get some ideas, maybe bring some back next month with a, a plan, ask them us for next month. We'd hope to get the work done all in advance of the July start date that we hope for Park Street.
Great.
Still making sense, though. If it's really bad, what, we want to get down there and get, again, when the root's gone in that connection, I'll be down in the main.
Yeah.
As a matter of time.
Some serious trees, so...
Yes, and you know, people, one of them, there's one on Madison Street right now that, that it's, the tree's probably like sixty-eight inches, but it's directly over top. And, and they're having some issues. It's right up out of...
Is that where the trees are being cut down or is that...
Over there, it was a lot having to do with water, uh, service lights, leaves and some of the heating of the sidewalks. We're gonna take the sidewalks out, get the roots everything out of the way so we can, sidewalks don't...
Okay.
Unjue like that. And then just some ideas, uh, T P W equipment stuff, um, obviously we got our new backer last year that was great finding, um, our Elgin street sweeper is getting pretty old. We're looking, uh, and if that thing goes down, we're, it's, we're in trouble, I'd say, with the laughter cars. And that does a full stretch down in twenty-four.
Saw the other day going up twenty-four.
Every week, every week. We don't get any money for N twenty-four, right? So that's more of a downtown maintenance thing that, so that street sweeper goes from, it looks to us, oh, it's almost both sides at least once a week, collects a lot of stuff off the streets.
I think you should give it to Tom when he retires.
Yeah, there you go. Let him drive it home.
Yeah.
See him three hours. Um, so, you know, we're, we're looking around and Bell Equipment, uh, Rain is, we, services those, that brand, and they have one, actually out in Iowa right now, that they would, it's twenty-five years old. If you, I just, when I wrote this, I didn't know that. We were just estimating and then boom, today they have it out there. We wouldn't even know to get it till this fall, but then they get it and bring it back and go through it and stuff. Uh, but something to look at for our budgeting time. Don already has another truck, one pickup and one, one ton truck that he thinks are, need to be replaced too. Put a fair amount of dollars into the one already this winter time and we start electrical issues. So just some ideas on some of those, um, that we'll have more further discussions on. We're probably about at least kind of put our dibs on that factor, or the, uh, the sweeper. Because it's the type, there's a couple of different types. This will be one that actually has the high suction on it for our streets, works well. Some of them just have brushes and don't really do that well. Again, it's, uh, twenty nineteen to twenty-five years old. Uh, the other one's quite old and we put, I think it's three, four thousand dollars in parts in the last month alone, more like a year. Again, we're gonna try to sell the backer out there probably in the next sixty days. We left it inside of the winter, it says water and like this way it was spraying to it off, but we're hoping to get fifteen, twenty thousand out of that. Hoping to get maybe fifteen out of the old sweeper. But, yeah, to get, if it goes down now, because it's part of our end of sport permit too. Street sweeping, parking lot sweeping, things like that, we have to do. And if it goes down, it's, it's hard to, uh, replace it quickly.
Absolutely.
So, hopefully we'll come back with something.